Welcome back. We'll now begin our final committee for the Bellingham City Council on July 10th. We have three items before us which are somewhat related to each other. They have to do with the countywide jail planning process. The first item is a memorandum of agreement between the city of Bellingham and Watkin County regarding their commitment to incarceration reduction and prevention. The Watkin County Council has proposed that the city of Bellingham and Watkin County together dedicate funding for incarceration alternatives. We have in our packet a draft interlocal agreement which assumes the city of Bellingham agrees with the jail facility use agreement and that the matter is referred to the ballot and that it passes. In other words, this agreement only takes effect if all of those things happen. If that doesn't happen, it doesn't go on the ballot. If it does not pass, the agreement doesn't take effect. The attached interlocal agreement is in a draft form. It has not been introduced or approved yet by the county council, but the draft we have before us came from the county and has kind of got tentative approval of the county council member who is leading that effort. It still has to be introduced and accepted over there, however. A final version is anticipated following further county council action in putting the jail matter to the November ballot. I'm not quite sure what that means. This agreement may just be accepted in this form if we agree to it and if they agree to it. It says be presented by Deputy Administrator Brian Heinrich, but do you have anything you would like to say about this?
You know, when I wrote that summary statement, that feels like a lifetime ago. So, in that time, I then left the state for a few days and a lot has happened. So, I think your summary was pretty succinct except for that last part, and I would only add that the MOA is on the county council's agenda for tomorrow, I believe at 1:30.
Okay.
And, I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to add anything?
Well, I just appreciate the improvements that the county council and city council members made in the MOA, and I believe that they should all move forward together before I signed anything because I do think it was an agreement that looks at the alternatives to incarceration and helps with recidivism, and I would like to see those fully implemented, so.
So, for one little piece of history, at our last meeting, this council voted to send a letter with some messages of our concerns and what we would like to see improved about the jail plan, and this memorandum of agreement is a response to one of those concerns, and that concern had to do with whether or not there was kind of equally important or significant financial commitments to reducing incarceration rather than just building a jail. So, this is the county council, some county council members' response to our letter. Council members, Terry?
Yeah, I just want to expand a little bit on what Michael said. Part of this was the result of Michael and I meeting with county council members with the letter and looking at ways to talk about what was in the letter and to talk about issues that we had with the agreement and what it might take for us to move forward with it. My big issue, one of them, has been regarding the size and the relationship of the incarceration alternatives and the funding for that. Because I saw, having worked in the system, having worked for juvenile court administration, we were up against, we had a juvenile detention center that was bumping against maximum occupancy and looking at possibly needing a new detention center even though it hadn't been that old. But to deal with that, we were able to put in place many programs that worked as alternatives to detention. We started a juvenile, a justice center with a school for incarcerated youth who are people that were out and out of school. We had job training programs. We had a number of different programs, and then as a result, the population in that juvenile center went way down. But unfortunately, one of the unfortunate things that started happening as we started having budgetary problems, the first things to go away in the budget were those programs that were not mandated by the state, which meant all of those alternatives because there wasn't mandatory, mandated funding in that. So, before I could support the jail agreement, I wanted to make sure that there's going to be funding in that to fund alternatives to incarceration programs. In our, in talking, Councilman Sat Paul came up with the idea of a minimum of 25% of funds that isn't going directly to the funding of the jail be added, agreed upon by the city and the county council to go towards alternatives to detention, a minimum of 25%. I think both of us would have liked to have bumped that higher, but we both had administrators and all of us knew we have administrators to deal with that, might not want to see it go too high, but it's a minimum of it. And so, that's how we got to this agreement with it. And so, I really want to thank the county council members that worked with us to get to this, and Michael, and as we kind of talked about this, and then the county did propose it and passed this on to us, but.
Dan?
I guess I have a question. Page 132 of the packet, second whereas clause talks about the incarceration prevention reduction task force, and that this task force is charged with reviewing Watkin County's criminal justice and behavioral health programs. What I guess my question is, what are we talking about here? So, it says the Watkin County Council urges the cities of Watkin County to continue to fund incarceration prevention programs, and the way that I read this is that it would be based, at least partially, on the task force's recommendations, but neither of which, there are three, but the two that I would think that this money would go towards, these funds would go towards, are not listed here. The behavioral health subcommittee is recommending a program called GRACE, ground level response and coordinated engagement. It's a pre-arrest tool to use that targets people who use our systems frequently and in ways that aren't appropriate. And out of the legal and justice subcommittee, their recommendation is a pre-trial risk assessment tool that would be, so that's one step up the chain, so to speak, where it's basically assessing a person's behaviors to see if they're dangerous. If they're dangerous, then they should not be released. If they are not dangerous, then they could be released on some type of program, electronic home monitoring. The other recommendation out of the triage subcommittee is the triage facility, but that to me is, that's a different component. What's listed here under the second whereas clause are alternative jail programs, EHM, work release and work group programs, mental health court, drug court, which is great. There's a, I'm looking at a June 9th memo from Judge Raquel Montoya Lewis, and she talks in here about the need for, this is drug court related, therapeutic treatment court coordinator needs to, they need more staffing, basically, and their substance use treatment provider does not follow evidence-based manualized treatment. I don't know how that happens, but that does, and it says it's because of a lack of funding. So, I guess I'm trying to understand where this $30 million over 30 years in diversions, where specifically are we applying these dollars? I mean, to Terry's point, if it's not spelled out, it might not go to the right place, or places. So, I want to understand where those dollars go.
Well, first of all, I share your concern that we put the money where we're going to get an effective outcome, and I think Terry's anecdote about juvenile court and juvenile detention is perfect. That's one reason why we were so insistent on having the advisory committee. I mean, we can't guarantee, we really can't guarantee or restrict future bodies because if we have an agreement, they can vote to change it. What we have to do is we have to build the process in place where the expectation is that these are issues that we're going to discuss within a framework, and we're going to make sure that they get, they get implemented. I mean, there's, there's no guarantees, and I, I've been involved in a lot of law writing, and the truth is, if you make it clear what your intention is, and I think our intention is, reducing incarceration and recidivism, then you have something to measure the actions of whatever elected body is seated. And I think that's the best, I personally believe that that's the best we should do, and we should hold myself and all of you and the county council and the county executive all accountable for meeting the goals if that's a goal we've agreed to. So, I think the last sentence isn't probably very assuring to you in that paragraph where it says, "or others as agreed to by the party." And the good thing about GRACE especially is that it includes county and city participants. So, my belief is that that is a great opportunity for a partnership that potentially doesn't exist already. And then the, the pre-trial risk assessment, I think that was pretty clear in our meeting today that without having that risk assessment in place, especially for the county, because the city does use a risk assessment when they look at who should be on electronic home monitoring. So, we do use something like that, but the county needs to have something like that, too. I think it was pretty clear that they didn't, they didn't have that, or they didn't get the, they didn't have the data to show that they had it. So, I think both of those things, if me as a member of the incarceration task force, the alternatives, will, would make sure that those were in the recommendations that come to the county council.
Gene?
Yeah, I want to thank you, Michael, and Terry for going the extra mile here, and council members Brown, Sedu, and Wymer from the county council. It's been a long road, and I'm glad we're at this point now where hopefully we're in agreement, then we can move forward and get this to the voters. They're the ones that are going to make the ultimate decision.
Terry?
Yeah, Dan, to answer your question, I know it's not specified exactly which ones are, they're going to use the funding to, and I wish they were, but there is one additional place in this, on the last whereas, on number five, it does mention this, and that's the, the commitment is intended to accomplish the continued implementation of the criminal justice and behavioral health programs recommended by the IPRTF. And as far as I know, at that time, we haven't seen those agreed on recommendations yet, but it's, but that's, was the intent when, when we were talking about it, that it is to fund these recommendations coming out of the committee that you're putting all this time and effort into, and make sure that there's funding going to be there.
Pinky, then Dan again.
I just wanted to thank everybody for working on this, and because this is a huge step forward for us. It is an actual commitment towards prevention and reduction. No, we can't guarantee what everything will be in the future, but I think the intent is there, and we have some time before this is built. We have some time to look at where we're making improvements and what we can do best in the future and lay those things out, but I don't think there's any way we can say specifically what all those programs there could be because we don't even know there's solutions that are going to come to us that might be brand new, and I think we have to have an opportunity to do that, to evolve. But I just wanted to say that this is, this is a good commitment, I think, for us, to our community, to say that we are committed to incarceration reduction and to looking at diversion programs and mental health. So, I think this is a good guarantee for our community.
Dan?
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify. So, the phase three report from the task force is out, and those, GRACE and pre-trial risk assessment and the 32-bed triage facility, those are specific recommendations that are, are listed, and I don't know, perhaps you didn't receive that in time, but that report is out, and so I think that, you know, since the task, pardon me, the task force did articulate specifically those, those two programs, and they do fit very neatly into this, into this proposal, that I just think they should be identified. I mean, there are other ones that are, that are not part of the task force that are clearly identified here, so I'm just saying, if we, if we have an opportunity to be specific to match the, the recommendations of the task force, I think that this is a good opportunity to do that.
Just a point of clarification for the public. The, the actual language in the, in the resolved and agreed to part is actually very broad. It says to fund new or expanded incarceration prevention and reduction programs. So, that's even less specified. I think it was written to be broad so that whatever came up could be funded. It doesn't exclude, but it doesn't guarantee GRACE, for example. So, I think the, the actual language is even less specific. So, I'm losing, I think, Dan, and then Terry again.
What I'm saying, though, is that that can, that GRACE and pre-trial risk assessment could be added to the laundry list of programs that are included in the second whereas clause. That's all I'm saying. And, and I agree that there, that there should be room, there should be, there should be breadth in it in terms of new programs that we don't, that we don't know about right now, that could be disruptive to, in a good way, to the, to, you know, creating a jail population reduction. I think that that's, that's smart to do that. All I'm asking is that include the two that the task force has worked on for about two years now.
Terry?
Yeah, I, one, I don't see where this would probably be a problem at all, since the county council has not signed it, and since this is a draft and they're going to consider it tomorrow, I guess I would like to recommend that we add, I think this already has the expansion of the crisis triage facility in it.
Yeah.
And to add what the.
GRACE and the risk assessment tool.
Yeah, if we could add those two to this and bring that to the, to the county council and see our recommendations.
And this is to the. This is to the MOA, so I think that, that making a motion, that you guys can discuss it would be appropriate.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion seconded before us. This is to add to the second recital, which has a list of, of prevention and treatment alternative programs. To add to that list, the GRACE program and the adoption of a pre-trial risk assessment tool, to make sure that those were called out as, as among the list of possibilities. Is there any further discussion of that change? Dan?
I just want to be clear that we're voting on separate items here. This is, this is not the facility use agreement. That's a, that's a separate item. This is a, this is an MAU, memorandum of understand, or agreement.
MOA.
What's the?
MOA.
I'm reading up agreement.
MOA.
Okay, well, okay, so it's a, it's a, it's an agreement.
This is agreement.
Okay. So, it would be, so for, this is, I know this is probably confusing for some folks. I'm, I'm supportive of this, and if I didn't support this and it goes to the ballot, it would, it would be, it would be bad for our criminal justice system. So, I'm going to support this, but I'm not going to support the facility use agreement. So, I want to make that abundantly clear.
April?
It just says, we're on the information only one, right?
No, no.
So, I thought the motion was just to change this agreement, not to pass it.
It says information only, but we can also give authorization to the mayor to enter into the agreement.
Yeah, I would ask that, I mean, this is, it's almost like we're assuming we're going to agree to the jail use agreement, so I would like to visit this after we decide what we're going to do with the jail use agreement, and then I'll have a better idea, but to pass this first, it's almost in de facto saying, it's confusing to me, and I think it could be confusing to the public as well.
So, let me just go to the motion first. This is a motion right now to amend the MOA to add those two elements to the second recital, then we can return to the larger issue of the MOA itself. Is there any further discussion of this amendment? All those in favor of adding those two elements to the list of possible pre-trial or alternative programs signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that amendment to the MOA has been passed. We can now return to the issue of the MOA as amended.
Yeah, I just want, wanted to mention, is that was a continuation of the comment before, that I do think in the, the whereas is, item E, and now therefore be resolved, E, is, the last part of that is an important element, and that's the parties shall also work to update the JFFUA to include language similar to what is contained in this agreement because I think it's important that we be able to have as much strength with this so other councils in the future won't feel, oh yeah, we can just cut that funding, and because I think, you know, it's just too, sometimes, yeah, so I just think that that part, element is important that, in that before we, the mayor signs off on anything. If we do vote to agree on this, on the other parts, that, that part's kind of done, too. Yeah, and.
April?
So, as far as how this, this 25% of the cities gets to be spent, I'm confused in the wording of it. It's, it's that we can spend it on our diversion practices as well, so if we decide there's something we want to do within the police department or very specific to Bellingham, we get to pull on that 25% to do something, or this is, the county's going to be spending that, their 25% and our 25% on countywide programs.
Yeah, part E is the one that says the parties agree that each is an independent entity operating pursuant to the terms and conditions of the agreement shall work collaboratively to develop and define appropriate oversight of this timing distribution legislative compliance and financial commitment. We are independent entities, but we're going to coordinate, but this, this doesn't mean that they have control over our funding or we have control over their funding. It just says each independently, we're going to commit at least this amount, maybe more, maybe less, depending on our own budget-making process, our own priorities. We can pull in general fund monies, we can get grants, it could all go towards this purpose.
There was something very specific to Bellingham, we could use it for that, that might not be.
Yes, I think probably the assumption is that our, our mix of programs would be different from their mix of programs.
Yeah, I can see where, I can see where it's important that if, if this goes forward to ballot and the city's involved, that it is an important step. I just, my, my biggest problem with the jail use agreement is we just haven't done any assessment to know what those impacts are really going to be on the city, the fiscal impacts, the subsidizing WTA to get a rat out there, the police officers will be offline, all of those things. So, although I'm really supportive of, and I would have been way more supportive if we would have taken the large hunk and done this in a very different way of making sure that we're looking at the programming first and ensuring people are just staying out of jail, period, and really treating it like a true public safety tax and not a jail tax. And I understand the wording's being changed, but I don't, I don't believe the whole thing's really been changed considerably enough to call it a true public safety tax. That if we don't know what those expenses are, I'm just concerned that if we have to buy, I don't know, we have to pay for two or three more police officers, that we didn't even really get to use the money that came back to us for the true things that we wanted to do for diversion, that now we're taking 25% of that out. We have no idea what, what we're going to incur. I, I think it's safe to say that if we do have any money left over, I know, I know this community, they're not going to let this council, no matter who's on here, get away with not putting it towards. I just think that's the case unless we continue to grow in an inappropriate way, but I have some reservations, and, and the reason why I would like to wait for this vote on this until after we do the jail use agreement is, for me in voting, if I know the jail use agreements going forward, I don't know if we have a majority or not. I really don't. And so, if it's not going to go forward, then, then there's no point in voting on this. If it is going to go forward, then if I don't support that, and I know, for me, in order to vote on this, I need to vote for it after. Well, you were suggesting that we were going to be.
We could vote on this. If we voted on this, that would be, the county council would know that we are on board at least with this 30%. Well, it says information only, but that's just because of what the staff put in. The truth is, we could vote to authorize the mayor to enter into this agreement, and then then the.
I'll move there.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to second to authorize the mayor into signing this memorandum of agreement, which would set the financial commits for the county and the city if the sales tax indeed was passed by the community.
I wonder if I could make a friendly amendment to yours, Gene, that we authorize the mayor to enter into this agreement if a, if we pass, the council passes the interlocal jail financing use agreement.
That's fine.
Because that way, it, it, it works with April and we still have this out there.
That's fine.
And so, they're tied.
Is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay, so there's no objection. The motion before us is to authorize the mayor to enter into the memorandum of agreement, but her signature would be conditional upon the county, the city council approving the JFFUA. I'd like to add a second condition, that, that her signature also is dependent upon the county agreeing to what goes forward across the street, right?
Yeah.
We won't agree to this and agree to the JFFUA, and then they don't, so just basically, as soon as the county does or doesn't also agree to the MOA, then Kelly can go ahead and sign that document. Is there any objection to adding that condition to Kelly's signing? Okay, so that now is the motion before us, to approve this memorandum of agreement, as modified by adding a GRACE pre-trial risk assessment tool to the list of whereas's. The approval is conditioned, the mayor's execution is conditioned upon us passing the JFFUA and the county agreeing to the MOA. That's the motion. Any further discussion on this issue? April?
I have just a procedure question, so if, if, because I, am I able to abstain from this because I'm so confused as to, I mean, I understand it, but at the same time, I feel like we're almost endorsing the jail use agreement, and until, I mean, I certainly support this if that went through, but until I know that's going through, I don't, I don't understand why I'm voting on something. Is it just because I'm voting on something that's attached to what could potentially come through?
So, just try to answer the, the, just the clarification, so I, and, and jump in, but as I'm interpreting the motion, you're going to treat the MOA and the JFFUA as a package, and, and so, again, an approval of this without an approval of the JFFUA will have no effect. That's my understanding. And furthermore, as a package, it would have to be approved as a package by the county, assuming you get around to, if you end up passing both the MOA and the JFFUA, and it goes back to the county.
Thank you, I needed that clarification.
I would like to make one, there was an error in B. This, the word prevention was left out. It should be parallel language, that it, the city funds these new or expanded incarceration prevention reduction programs, and the county, it says, to fund these new or expanded incarceration and reduction programs. I think it's incarceration prevention reduction. So, that's just a typo, the word prevention was left out, kind of a key word, so I'm going to assume that that's included in the motion. I'll go ahead and take a turn. You know, there were several things that I didn't like and don't like about the overall jail plan, and the biggest of those is the fact that it was a jail plan rather than a larger public safety plan. Some people have said that it's still maybe not a public safety plan, was way more a public safety plan if this component is baked into the recipe. It doesn't come after, it's part of the recipe. And so, to me, this is the biggest thing that was missing, the most important element that needed to be there, and by passing this MOA, we take the biggest step to creating, you know, millions of dollars in funding that needs to be there for a really genuine, comprehensive look at criminal justice. Our community is safer not when more people are locked up, but when fewer crimes are being committed, when fewer people are cycling through our criminal justice system. That's how you actually make your community safer, if there's next need to have people in prison. So, to me, this is, this is a fundamental, important element, and so adding this goes a long way to address things deficiencies. I still don't like the jail being moved out of Bellingham. I, I think that's probably true for the many people on this council up here. I'm not fixing that problem right now, but I am fixing a potentially much bigger problem, more fundamental problem, and so that's why I'm, I'm in support of this, of adopting this MOA. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to sign this memorandum of agreement with the amended edition of GRACE and the pre-trial risk assessment tool, and with the condition that the mayor's execution is dependent upon the JFFUA and the MOA being approved by both parties, city and county? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. The next item is the JFFUA itself. The JFFUA, or Jail Facility Financing and Use Agreement, describes the financial agreements, including the use of the sales tax, which we just talked about, and the. the use of the sales tax, which we just talked about, and the cost allocation between participating jurisdictions. That is how much each jurisdiction will pay into the construction and operation of the jail. The JFFUA also describes the uses of the proposed facility as well as certain operational aspects of the existing facility. On to, skip that part, I don't want to talk about it. This JFFUA actually came before the city council earlier. We tabled that. We can either start a new motion right now, or we can have a motion to bring it off of the table and before us. Jean?
I'll move approval of the interlocal jail facility financing use agreement.
Second?
We have a motion to second to approve the interlocal jail facility financing use agreement. Discussion. Dan?
Mayor and I were at the task force meeting this morning. We were presented with the Vera Institute of Justice, their preliminary report. This is, these are not recommendations, this is just a preliminary report. And the name of the report is "A Data-Driven Understanding of the Wacom County Justice System." That's a great title for, for, for us to, this, this should how we, this should be the way that we frame our discussions and our deliberations on jail facility use agreement, and also just criminal justice reform. I'm going to read you for 30 seconds here, their conclusion. "Through inter-agency collaboration and coordination, Wacom County must address the systemic drivers of jail population growth. This is the only effective means of controlling jail growth. Any attempt to ease overcrowding by building a new facility or expanding the current one will not address the underlying causes of population growth, and the new facility will quickly become overcrowded. Criminal justice and community stakeholders must work together to achieve a safe, sustainable, and fair system." These are the experts. These are the experts, these, these are nationally-recognized group of, organization of people that go around the country and talk to municipalities and other jurisdictions about criminal justice reform. To me, voting, to me, and this is, you all have your own vote, that's fine. To me, voting for this agreement is voting against the experts. Voting for the, the agreement is voting against the, the expert advice that was given this morning, that the county council, the only county council member there that was on the task force is Councilmember Mann from county. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of items in here to deliberate on and consider. There is, there are three thought exercises that we did at the end of the meeting that would have reduced, if implemented, would reduce the jail population by 166 people. So, I guess I'm still, my position has not changed. We are, we are fundamentally out of order in our, in our thinking and our decision-making process. I, I don't really understand completely what we're buying here. We're being, I, I'm just, I'm just going to finish here with, we're being asked to make the largest investment in Wacom County's history in this, and we don't have all the information. So, so the answer's no from, from this part of the dais.
Anyone else? Terry?
Yeah, I fully understand a lot of your arguments. I've, I've struggled hard with this one. One, having been inside the jail even years ago when it was falling in disrepair, I do know that something has to be done. That's, you know, and the idea of a new jail, I know, is, has always been something that I felt is necessary. There is talk, well, we can just repair that. You can't repair that one unless you have a place to put everybody, which is a new facility of some kind, and to put the prisoners while you go and do a thorough renovation. I don't know how that's done. I still would much prefer, well, I do know ways that it could be done, but, but that's not my decision. The decision is totally with the county on where that's location is going. I don't agree with that, but I also know that our options right now are, if we can say no, and opt out of an agreement with the county and the others, and then we're left with two alternatives. We either build our own jail, or we send, which, if we build our own jail, it's not just the cost of the jail, it's the cost of hiring, training, and putting in place new employees, and then that ongoing salary and that ongoing retirement. And you can guess where those positions are going to be, which bargaining group, and it's going to cost a staggering amount of money for us, I think. Or, we can send the, our prisoners to Anatchee, or maybe Descagee at their new jail, but it's out of county. So it ends up even farther for families than where it is. So, you know, we're kind of in a rock, between a rock and a hard place with this. This agreement is not, definitely not perfect, and there's a lot of flaws that I think with it, but I do commend Jean and Pinky and the mayor for bargaining and setting and coming up with an agreement that is so much better than where we were two years ago. On the dais, I'd asked Mark, I asked Michael, and Michael talked to Mark about preparing a comparison sheet between 2015 and 2017, so we could see some of the numbers. Because we can't necess, I don't think we should look at the starting point of, starting where the, the committee ended up this time. I think we need to look at, what were we arguing against when we voted resoundingly no in 2015? And if you look at, starting with the beds, in 2015, we were looking at the proposal by the county of up to 521, with an additional 128 beds possible in Phase Two. So as a possible maximum of 649 beds, the committee got the recommendations down to a range of between 127 and 453, plus medical and behavioral health beds, which weren't included in that other proposal at all. And so, we ended up with a major reduction in the size. Do I think we could get by with less? I do. And, and the council may decide, because it's totally with the council. When they look at the, at the Vera report and see some of the results, they can still make that decision. But again, that's not my decision to, to make with it. But so many of the other, the financials on this that the committee was able to negotiate for, is so much better than where we were. And so I'm going to suck it up and realize in politics, you end up having to compromise, and you're not going to get everything you want, but I think we're getting a whole lot better than what we had before, and with the addition of the guaranteed money for alternatives, that, that was the part that, that got it for me, so I am going to support it. And I'm sorry I'm so long-winded, but this has been a hard decision for me to get to here with this, but I appreciate everybody, all the hard work that they've done on doing this.
Pinky?
I agree with you, Terry. I think that we've had incredible community involvement, and very, and a lot of people are very passionate about this, and I respect that, and I'm glad you're paying attention. I, and I, and absolutely, Dan, our criminal justice system needs improvement, no question. And by using things like the Vera Institute and Grace reports, we can implement things and do it better, but we cannot do that in the current situation that we have. We have an inhumane situation right now. Not only are there, there's absolutely no services in the current jail that we have. So, in order to actually provide people with a better, a better quality of life while they're serving their time, and also an opportunity to turn things around in their life, we need to build a new facility. We have time, from when it gets built and what we decide right now, to do it better, so that when we're, we are actually operating that facility, we're being the best that we can be. And actually putting money and committing towards that together gives us that opportunity. So for all the people who don't, who are saying that voting for a jail means that we're not voting for improvements, I, I don't believe that. I believe that voting for this jail is giving us an opportunity to serve our community in a way better capacity, because this jail is horrible, and all of us have been in it, and we know what it's like. So, I think that this is an opportunity to do the right thing for our community. Did we make some concessions? Yes, we did. But I still believe we're doing the right thing to provide the best that we can. And we can be proactive in looking at all the things that we're learning right now and implement them from day one in the new jail. So I'm just going to say that I'm going to support it, and I believe it's the right thing.
Roxanne?
This has been, by far, in the last four years, the toughest decision for me to come to. I can say that, so simple. I've been 50/50 the whole way. 50% of my head has been really worried about the people who work in the jail every single day, and the people that we incarcerate in the jail, in a very unsafe environment. 50% of my brain has been with all of the organizations and individuals that don't want this jail, that don't like where it is, that don't like what the financial plan is. However, one thought that I'm continuing to circle around is if something adversarial happens in that current jail, in terms of somebody getting hurt, or having a fatality, or additional fatalities, I don't want that to weigh on my psychology with a no vote on this. And that will remain with us, because this is our responsibility in how we vote on this. So, I have been grateful to get all of the feedback and all of the community involvement. I have to do what I think is right, and send this forward to the voters, so all 50 and 50, and hopefully 100% of our community will have their say on this. I'm going to have anger on every side, no matter what I vote on. So, I'm going to have to support it, so it can be directed to the community, and the community can have their say in what they want out of this. I think that's the fairest way we can handle it.
April?
Let you have the last word, President. So, $354 million, basically by year 2048, paying back the bond, that's, that's what we're all going to be spending, is my understanding in the last, I looked at the, the tax financial. That doesn't include, as a city, when we pay booking, and then our share of every time we're going to have an inmate, so that you can topple that on. You know, I just have a reminder every day, every day that I go home and I see a nine and 11-year-old, that this is, this is going to be their burden. And then beyond that, to try to upkeep that. And, and I, I, I really believe in my heart, and it's the only reason I ever decide to get into office, is that we can infect, we can impact things directly and indirectly. We get to influence things. And there's just times where we have to do a hard stance, and I know it sucks, but it's when we're pushed up against a wall. Do we just go for what's in front of us, or do we say we're going to wait and we're going to do the best thing for this community? And I think voters really trust us, and I think by signing on to this agreement, voters that have a lot of things going on in their life, they make an assumption that we, as a city, completely agree and, and we're going forward with it. And I, I will not endorse that, I will not look, I, there's no way that you could have me as my, when my children are to a point of having to kind of start, well, they'll, they'll be paying for this because they buy socks and different things, so they'll already be part of it with the sales tax. But I think as, as they're adults and coming in to asking me of, why, why did I support something that was going along with the system, the status quo, whenever so many changes were coming down the pike? Why the largest capital investment ever done in a community that I'm a part of was for incarceration, and 25% was for recidivism? So, I, I, I just struggle. I can hear that we've, we've lost the majority, and, you know, that's unfortunate. I heard from county council members, I spent a lot of hours talking with each of them, and I, I thank them all for their time in, in trying to help me understand what, what they were coming from, but every single one of them hated the location. Everybody up here just said they hate the location. We keep saying we need a new jail. I, I'm sorry, but it's just ridiculous to me that you would have this many elected saying they don't like this, and then they're like, but we'll just suck it up, and we're going to do it. I'm not, I'm sorry to, I'm trying not to make my voice go up high like that, because I'm not making fun of anybody, but I think it's just the absurdity of now finally being part of this process that I watched a little bit on the outside, but I was never fully integrated into, and I'm seeing how it works, and I'm frustrated. So, I will not be supporting it. I really hope the voters won't support it, and I really hope that our county council members will come forward and we can get to work. We can start with something like that. There's, we contract all the time with Tacoma because we were forced to. So the county too could make that situation inside that jail a lot easier and a lot safer, very quickly, while we figure out, if it is a new facility, where is that new facility going to go, and what will the impacts be on this community. We have no idea the unintended consequences of moving a jail out to Ferndale. We don't know what it's going to do to our police department, we don't know what it's going to do to our, our downtown core, we don't know what it's going to do to our judicial system. We have, we have no idea the expenses that it's going, we're going to incur. We have no idea, because we've never done an assessment on it. We're just going to build this and we're going to see. And, and that's very unfortunate. So, I won't be supporting it. I hope for the few people that might be watching this, they will not vote for it, and we'll move forward.
Point of clarification, I don't think that's appropriate to make that statement when there's an election possibly coming up. We're not supposed to talk about politics from this dais.
Thank you. I, I recuse those comments. I'm still learning, I'm a year and a half in, so my apologies.
Our lawyer, our lawyer is nodding, yeah.
Okay, I, can I take back those comments?
That's fine, it's gone.
Is that how I do it? So, I guess I'm just saying that I, I hope the county will provide the leadership that we really need and, and start this process over, and we can get to, I mean, all the other things that we're working on with equity, this is just right up there with it.
So, I, Terry and Pinky, if you don't mind, I'm going to take a turn, then we'll go to Terry, and then we'll go to Pinky. So, I've been kind of thinking of Reinhold Niebuhr's Serenity Prayer a lot recently, right? You know, having the wisdom to know what you can change, and the wisdom to know what you can't, and then also the wisdom to fight for the changes that you can. And I think we, we fought and made some important changes, and there's some things that we have tried to change, and they, and they haven't changed. I still think this is out of sequence. Dan, you're exactly right. With, you know, the Vera report, and it wasn't the final one, it was just kind of a preliminary report, and it was a great report. They did some really, they had to divide up in many ways, a lot of different sources of data, but in so doing, there, there, I can start seeing the size of the levers that we, as a community, can push on, and the size of the benefit we might get with those improvements. I, I still think it's premature to determine the best size of the jail. I, I think the size of jail has been reduced to a very reasonable number, but we don't know exactly, you know, where that number is yet. But that, that size determination, there's still months between now and the final architectural and engineering designs of that jail. If this ballot measure is approved, the county will start moving forward on the actual design. That could be several months after the November election. That's eight, nine months from now. I really hope the task force recommendations and the Vera recommendations show some way forward, and that we will be thinking ahead of time about how we would spend those monies on prevention programs, like Grace, that already look like really excellent candidates. It's still a little bit out of sequence, but we, regardless, I think we, we do need a new jail. I think the jail would be better downtown. But the current jail is a relic of the past, it's an outmoded design, it was flawed from the beginning, maybe that wasn't known at the time, but if we were to spend all this money, millions of dollars, which by the way, we'd also have to borrow for, the county have to borrow, we would be buying an old car with no modern safety features, right? Whereas what we need is a safer, modern car, that has the programs, that has an enlightened approach to criminal justice. So fixing the current jail is expensive and wrong, building a new jail with, you know, smarter jail that's integrated with these prevention programs, these programs aimed at breaking the cycle of recidivism, that's what we need. I think approving this interlocal agreement on financing doesn't prevent us from having a smarter jail, doesn't prevent us from having those prevention programs, doesn't prevent the county from actually moving ahead on the recommendations, which are coming only now, and making a better determination, determination on size several months from now. now. It is still possible that we can get a, a better plan out of this. The one piece I think is not going to change is location. I regret that terribly. Um, but voting no on this jail facility use agreement, um, it won't stop the jail from moving. Voting no on this, uh, won't make the old jail any more viable alternative, right? Voting no on this doesn't do much to me that's constructive, but it does do something really important. It protects our downside risk. We have no right, Bellingham as a city has no right to put our inmates in the county jail. It's done through an agreement. That agreement expires. We can be locked out of the jail. We have been locked out of the jail. The county has a higher obligation, a legal obligation to imprisoning the felons and our inmates are not on that list as a requirement. By signing this JFFUA, we prevent that downside risk. We will be involved in the new jail when it is built. We have a good place to put our inmates, especially if it's a smarter jail, I hope it will be. But if we don't join the JFFUA and if the council goes ahead and if the voters go ahead, we're out of luck and we have an obligation to protect public safety. And our only counter move at that point is to turn around, build our own jail and operate our own jail at tens of millions of dollars, which we don't have with the itty bitty little piece of the tax revenue that is left to us. And that's not enough to own and operate a jail. So I think the downside risk is enormous on, on this. And I, I, I think there's unacceptable risks to the public and unacceptable risks to the people working the jail and unacceptable risks to the people who are facing incarceration. So I think this is actually a step forward. I think we could have taken more steps forward. I hope we still take further steps forward, but I'm going to support this jail agreement because, um, it does the minimum of what we need to do to protect public safety. It was Terry and then Pinky.
Just a couple more things and I'm done with, with this. But it's been talked about, we don't know the unintended consequences of moving the jail and I agree, but we have glimpsed the unintended consequences of having to send people out of county because we can't put them and use the jail. And if we opt out and this passes, we, that's where we're left. Either Michael's option of building a new jail and then what, we're funding two different jails or shipping people out. And we do know that, we have seen the consequences of that and we know that is definitely not good. We know the effect it has had on our police department in doing it. I've heard some of the effects on family members to have their, uh, family members in Wenatchee as opposed, you know, they're pretty hard going and visiting them. So we know, we know those effects. Yes, we don't know the, what the others are if they're, uh, uh, up by Slater Road area, but we do know this one. And if we don't approve this agreement and we think we're going to get a better agreement in next year or whatever, I got to tell you, we're, the county council right now is probably the most progressive county council we're going to see, given the way things are structured for elections that, for a long time. It's not going to get more progressive. We're losing Councilman Weimer and Councilman Mann and we have no idea who will be coming in to replace them and who knows on some of the other elections. So it's not going to get a more progressive council for us to be able to negotiate with. That we, we also know. So this isn't perfect, but I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm done. I'm going to support it and that's my last argument.
Pinky.
I'll be brief. Uh, I just want to say that, um, the reason that I served on the jail task force committee with Gene and the mayor is because we weren't looking at the right things in regards to what our overall plan was. And I wanted to ensure that we are looking at how we're going to reduce incarceration and that we're prioritizing diversion and alternative programs. And I think we did a lot towards making that happen. Also, we were looking at and discussing the fairness of, uh, what, um, the residents of Bellingham were paying towards the jail. We have come a long way and I am, um, much more comfortable supporting this agreement than I was supporting, or not supporting the last one. Um, and just as a reminder that, um, we are, these are the things that we are voting on, on this jail use agreement is how we're going to use the funds and accumulate the funds and also the programs that we're going to be using and how we're paying for them. In regards to the size and the location, those are county council decisions, not Bellingham City Council decisions. So I just want to reiterate those, um, in, in this agreement. Uh, and again, uh, I, I feel like we, at, working together with the counties and the small cities have come up with the best agreement we possibly come, could have, and we have come a long way from where we were and we're all sitting at the same table. So, uh, I know it's not perfect, but I, I, I think that, uh, we have a great foundation to move forward and do the right thing.
Roxanne.
Just really quickly, the bond that we will have and will be paying on is for 30 years and hopefully not to exceed that. And I just ask you to consider the growth that we're experiencing in this county and what it might be like in 30 years. Will we look back at this and wonder why we were arguing about the size? Because who knows how strong our population is going to grow and how much we might need beds in a jail if we do grow to that capacity? As far as location is concerned, I definitely understand why our, one of my council members is frustrated, but I'm equally frustrated that to me, the current location is a dead end and a financial pit. And I can't, I can't break away from that and obligate our city to have our own services and the fiduciary responsibility that we need to have to manage our governmental money that way. I also just want to express, we are having an extremely tough time locating a low barrier shelter. So there then, where would we locate jail services? These are complex problems within a major system that we need to help. But I really want to end by saying, any support for this will not end our council and our community's work on alternatives and diversions. That work is so strong and so committed to, and I just want to say it's been an honor to serve with all of you, to fight for all of that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the JFFUA signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. That passes five to two. I would also like to, um, say some positive words. The reason why we have the incarcerated introductory management task force is because the county acted. The reason we have the Vera report is because the county acted. The county's taken major steps forward to making it possible to have a better, better criminal justice system. And I also want to say that, um, I fully respect and I'm in great sympathy with the dissenting votes on, on this measure. The final item before the committee, the whole is the Watkin County ordinance. This is not something the city will vote on. If the county has introduced and will, uh, vote on its own ordinance, it's in our packet for information only. It is the ordinance that they would pass to put the sales, the public safety sales tax on the ballot. It does indeed refer to the at least 25% commit for the alternatives and, um, it also refers to the task force and, um, it's just for information only. Is there any, uh, with discussion on this item? Okay. Then we'll go on to, um, minutes for approval. We have one set of, we have a set of meeting minutes, actually has several items in here going back a ways. June 19th committee meeting minutes, uh, June 13th town hall meeting minutes with the comments submerged, the March 29th joint, um, city, county and lake district, uh, meeting minutes, and then also the meeting minutes from our city council retreat.
Seconds.
We have a motion second before us to approve those four sets of minutes. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, if those meeting minutes pass, we then go on to items for new and old business. I have several items I'd like to mention, but is there other people who'd like to go first? Dan.
This is, um, I guess for the mayor's office. Um, we, I've requested.
Please, don't let Scott Kelly.
Um, I just requested that we have a discussion on the, um, human rights commission slash ombudsman slash, um, what's the third one? Uh, no, it was commission, ombudsman and a third party, uh, dispute contractor. Contractor.
Yeah, I did talk with Kelly about that and also with, um, it is in the works, um, the proposal, some of the proposals. I don't know when Kelly feels she can bring that back to us though.
So you're right, Michael. We've had, uh, discussions with the Watkin Dispute Resolution Center. They were the, the ones that I think were on everybody's mind. Um, we anticipate continuing those discussions with them over the course of the summer. Uh, whether they would be the ultimate, you know, provider of that service or, um, or not is, is to be yet determined, but one thing we have talked about is having them, uh, help us define how we would structure wherever it is we end up, if that makes sense. We, we understand the interest and the motivation and what council has asked the mayor's office to do. Um, and it's likely that we'll work with the center to, to help us better define that and, and what that looks like. And they're going through, uh, transition time right now. Um, and so we anticipate over the course of the next couple of months to, to continue that conversation and, and work with them, so.
Does that work conclude anything, uh, similar to a civil rights commission, which is kind of another piece that's been talked about?
It's a good question. I, I don't think we've foreclosed any ideas at this point, to be honest with you. I think we really need to understand, um, i- i- I'm going back to maybe what we just talked about. What are, you know, what are the goals that we want to achieve? Uh, what are some of the consequences, you know, of whatever action we take? It's, it's those types of conversations that we need to have and we want to work with them to help better inform us. So I don't anticipate, uh, it would be several months before we come back with a recommendation.
Okay, but well, I, I'm just disappointed that we're not having that conversation here today. Would we?
Today, right now?
I had requested that it be on the, the agenda for this meeting and it's not. And I have constituents who are asking about this and I'm, I have no answer for them.
Well, again, if we go back to what the goals are, what are we trying to solve? That's been the central question that has not been answered. So I'm looking for feedback, so feel free. Tell me what you want us to achieve.
I think we've been clear, or I've been clear about that, that I, I want there to be a mechanism for, within the city or outside the city, um, that if a person feels that they've been discriminated against with, within any department or by any department, that there's a mechanism for them to resolve that issue. That, that's, that's my perspective. Others have different ideas, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
So those today would be handled, handled at the lowest level possible, right? There is a current structure to handle that. We don't, in vast majority of cases, they are resolved at the lowest level, meaning they're resolved at the front counter, they're resolved with a supervisor, they're resolved a department head. Failing that, they're resolved at the mayor's office. We frankly do not get many of those that require the mayor's involvement.
That was exactly the point of why council was, what we're hearing from the community is they do not feel comfortable going through those channels or they feel like they're being disregarded when they go through those channels. So what we're asking for is something either, some options of separate, whatever that is. And it wasn't just one person, it was several people. It's why after our passing of the resolution to support all people and our passing of the immigration rights reform, we asked for that, was that last year? Oh, it was this year. We asked for that to come back and then we asked for it to come back again. So the point is, is, is we can say like, we don't get very many complaints and so we're doing okay, but when, when the community members are telling us they, they have complained, they either have complained and they, they feel disregarded or they just don't, they, they're not reflected in, in, in this body, they're not reflected in our staff, many people. And so where can they go to ensure that they have a very safe place to have these conversations and they can have somebody help support them in that process of making sure the city knows that something has happened?
And I think what we're saying is we need time to develop that. We need, we're not just going to create a commission.
We asked for that. We, we asked for this again. It was just, all we're bringing up is that it was going to come back at this meeting. It's not at this meeting. So if you need more time on that, that's all we need to understand, but I think that could have been brought up at our last meeting and then we would have known it wouldn't be ready.
Terry and I recognize myself and then Gene.
Could we at least get it brought back to, in a future, near future, uh, council meeting to have the discussion with us in terms of what you're looking at and to see if that's, you know, because I do think we probably have a couple different versions of, of what might work, you know? Because I've, remember we, we had one a long time ago, before your time, before Kelly's time and stuff, but Gene and I remember when we had the human rights, or when we had the human rights task force, uh, would work with, uh, with complaints and things and bring things, bring things forward. And then we'd had another one with, under Randy Carroll, where we had, uh, a community group set up, made up of various ethnic components and, and income kind of things, diversity, that would meet on a regular basis and bring in if there were problems from neighborhoods or communities. And therefore they could, if a person had a problem that they didn't want to bring forward themselves, a representative on that could, could talk about it. So, you know, just so we can have that convers, maybe to have that conversation, maybe that would help. Would that help, April and Dan, if we?
We'll schedule it for the fourth.
Yeah, just, uh, yeah.
So let me, let me take my own personal swing at this. What I think we're looking for, what we've been asked for is, uh, new mechanisms or institutions or whatever to increase trust, transparency and accountability. And I understand the frustration there because I feel like we're trustworthy. I feel like we try to be transparent. I feel like we hold ourselves accountable, but as a message we're getting is that maybe we're still falling a little bit short on building enough trust with everyone, creating enough transparency to satisfy everyone's concerns and, and enough credibility on accountability. So a, a lot of it has to do with kind of establishing a credibility on all those things that I feel we're already committed to. And so whatever mechanisms there are, I think, you, you asked, uh, Brian, what is it we're trying to achieve? Well, I think we go back to the core things the city's already committed to, trust, accountability and transparency, and then view it as, as, as possible new mechanisms to increase all those elements. That's my swing at it.
Okay, thank you.
Gene?
I'll take a swing at it because I've been doing it for 24 years. Anybody that has a complaint that they've ever lodged to me, I've gone either to the mayor or the staff person involved. I think people are out there looking for something that's not necessary. I don't think we need a police oversight board. We don't need unelected people, no, I'm, let me finish. We don't need unelected people solving problems at city hall. We're all ombudsman, all seven of us. And I don't really appreciate getting not lobbied, but, um, attacked by people that send in little postcards and say, either do what you want or we're going to throw you out of office. I've had enough of that and those go right in the shredder. Those, I don't even listen to that. Now, to be fair to the administration, we did not give, we had differing, differing, differencing of opinion up here on what to look for, but Terry did bring up some instances where we did in the past. I have never in 24 years had anybody come to me and complain about a police officer, a firefighter, anybody that worked at city hall. Oh yeah, sure, somebody complained about not getting their plans done at the permit department. But folks, we're going too far with this, in my opinion. I think we've got a good team up here and we got a good team out there, all 810 employees. We're all in the same boat. And I think we're, we're looking for something that we don't need. When people disagree with us, I don't care how many committees you have, I don't care how many commissions you have, they're not going to be happy and they're holding against us. And you know how we find out if we're doing their job good enough or not? Election day, that's where you find out if you're doing your job or not. And people, of all people, I mean, when they come to this group here, I've sat out there and, and watched this group. Nobody should feel tentative or cautious about talking to us about anything, really. I mean, I, we're here, we're doing our jobs. Uh, I, I think, um, what we talked about in the past, talking about, uh, Moonwater and Dispute Resolution Center and that kind of thing. Center and that kind of thing, I'm all for that. But to appoint a body to get in the middle of us and the administration, I just don't think is a good idea.
Any further discussion on this issue? Roxanne?
I think this so much delves into how we do better community outreach and get better stakeholder input. This should be a major phase of it, and that's work that we can succinctly and easily improve upon, and it's already a part of our work plan.
Okay, Old and New items. Pinky, you had something?
Yeah. This weekend I had an opportunity to participate in the Pride Parade and the Pride Festival. And I just wanted to thank the Bellingham Police Department and the firefighters for volunteering and their service. And in a really amazing day that celebrated diversity and freedom, and I'm really proud of our city.
Yeah, that was good. Jean?
I'm not going to take a pain pill because I would enjoy myself too much tonight.
Anything else under Old and New? April?
Two, so I can do one. We had our working committee and planning committee today, and one of the things that came out of that is learning about Opportunity Council's master leasing program, which is a program where they have a liaison for those who either manage or own rentals. And they help them make sure that we're utilizing all of our vouchers and different subsidies and programs. And it was, it's really phenomenal to learn about, but it's not very well-known. And we have so many constituents that keep saying, I want to help on the affordable housing. Well, we have a lot of constituents that own properties, whether they're a small mom and pop owning a couple or a larger group that owns more. So I'd like to move that, or I'd like, I guess it's a motion, that we have Adrian and Mike come from the Opportunity Council to let us know what that master leasing program is. I think it needs to happen in the evening where we have the largest people viewing so they can describe what that program is. And if people want to apply, then they can, they can know that they can have their rental be part of that program and ensure that people with Section 8 or VASH vouchers can have an opportunity to utilize them.
Second. So, yeah, please help me understand the motion. The motion is to schedule a public presentation in the evening on that topic?
Yes, on the master leasing program through the Opportunity Council.
Okay. That's some date to be determined.
Soon, yes.
Okay, soon. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Go ahead and make that happen. Work with Marie, whoever needs to schedule that. Anything else under Old and New?
Yeah, my second.
Okay.
Okay, so I think, in my experience on the council, especially in that working committee, is that there's a missing piece that, we had the jail discussion before I got on, and then it came through, we had the jail discussion again, and there's times where we really start talking about recidivism and incarceration and all of those things, and then there's times where it kind of dies down and we're not really paying attention to that arm of the justice, our justice arm there of the city. And so my motion is that we develop, at least a trial period for the next six months of council, a justice committee where we would have three people, and I've talked to a couple that might already be interested. And we, just like we have a planning committee and other committees, we work with Judge Lev or Darlene, whomever that is, to get constant kind of reports on what's going on, what's next, what do they see in trends, are there ordinances that we need to look at that they're seeing people, whatever that is. So we understand who we have and what are we doing and how are we going to move forward. I think it keeps it at the forefront. So I'd like to try that out with this council and see if that helps us understand and stay educated on this issue over time.
Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that motion.
So the motion, as I understand it, is to create--
Justice committee.
--a justice committee. We have currently six standing committees. This would create another standing committee. It may or may not last forever, but at least for several months. We were talking about this. We already have a committee that has community development, and this overlaps with that. We already have a committee on public safety, public works, and it kind of overlaps with that. But I don't see any particular objection. There are some items that we might try to shoehorn to those other committees, and maybe rather than shoehorning them temporarily or whatever, foreseeable future, create this new standing committee. You would follow the same standing committee rules as all the rest of our committees. Is there any difficulty doing that? I believe our rules allow us to create committees as we see fit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to say, referring to what Councilmember Hamel was saying earlier about these reports that are out, and if they're reports that never have any light a day, then we don't have an opportunity to discuss them more to make the changes. And I think that committee would actually allow for these things.
I'm just trying to figure out what that's going to do, that Public Safety Committee that already deals with the police, the courts and stuff, is going to, can't do through that. I'm just, I don't know what you're, what you're after. Are you doing an investigative committee, is that?
No.
Because I don't, I'm not sure what you're looking at that we can't, things that can't already come through.
April?
I have never seen us bring something forward through public safety where we're understanding more about what's happening with and the role of our judicial arm, like what's going on over there, having regular contact. There may be times, just like the planning committee or the Parks and Rec, we don't need to meet. But it just leaves a placeholder where if something like the Vera Institute or different things, we're getting those reports, if Judge Lev, it's just an opening. And I think what I would need to do after, that's why I'm asking for a trial period, is whoever the two other members are that want to, we could sit down, talk with Judge Lev, talk with that judicial arm, and try to figure out what would be appropriate for this and see what happens. We never bring that kind of stuff through public safety.
It can.
Judge comes forward to do it with us. Yeah, on a regular basis.
And does the report.
Dan, you had your hand up?
I mean, if it pleases the body, I would be happy to be a part of that. I don't want there to be an overlap on existing stuff. What I see come forward in public safety are, you know, requests for additional officers and resources and things like that. And that all makes total sense to me for that. I'm intrigued by what you're saying. What I don't want to, I don't want to be in the position where I'm the only person who has the Vera report on council and sends it to you on Sunday night because my parents were in town for a week. You know, I just, I don't want to be, I think that's not good government to me. I think there should be more distribution of responsibility when it comes to some of these issues. And I do see value in, because of what we're talking about now and what the conversation will be for the next probably several years around incarceration stuff, but also just justice things. I'd be, I'd be fine with serving on that committee if that committee does get through.
Roxanne?
Please just be fair about how you select the committee members.
Well, so it would be the same procedure we do for our regular committees. There would be a nomination process for who'd be the committee chair. If there's more than one nomination, then we would vote. And the same thing with who would be the other two committee members. We follow our standard procedure.
Just really quickly, too, if this is an ongoing thing, think about how we have problems filling all of the committee roles at the beginning of the year, so then we're adding another committee to complicate that. And you'd want to have three people, and then we are all busy people, just.
Pinky, then Jean?
I totally recognize that. I complain about being on too many committees all the time. However, I'm actually willing to serve on this committee because I think that it is another level of commitment to our community that says we do care about our justice system and we are willing to look at what's not working. So I don't really want to be on another committee, but I would be willing because I think the information is important, and I think that we have to have an opportunity to have these kinds of discussions about our justice system.
Jean?
I would like to see what it is first because on a yearly basis, we hear with Judge Lev, we hear from Pete Smiley, we hear from our municipal court administrator. So I want to know exactly what the big purpose is going to be of this committee. And that's, I have the same question.
Let April respond, and then Terry. Oh, sorry. Brian?
I just wanted to add that the reason you don't see some of those items in the Public Safety Committee is we put them in committee of the whole, so the information does come to council just in that later committee.
Well, as I understand April's motion, one of the advantages or benefits she's hoping to see is a process more similar to what's going on in the planning committee right now, exploratory discussions of issues as opposed to disposition of a proposal or whatever. So the administration often brings forward kind of mature proposals. Am I understanding you correctly?
Yeah, I think, it's interesting when you talk with people who are on the outside kind of watching what go on. And that's right, things are usually pretty ripe as they come forward. And in working on this last work group, it's been really informative, and I think it's been for the community members that I've talked with, they can plug in, they can watch it, and they know. I guess my concern in all this is we're having this big jail conversation, but all the way up to this, what, other than kind of getting some report backs on what we're dealing with because we were limited in the jail access, what, how are we going to continue to dedicate ourselves in that and make sure that somebody's not just going to those meetings and we're getting a briefing here and there? I just, my hope would be that it would be exploratory. We could try it out. We reorg at the beginning of the year, and we could determine that really didn't float and it wasn't useful. It would be the members going and working with that judicial arm to try to figure out what that would look like and what we would do.
Roxanne?
We have just gone through some really extreme experiences today, so I was hoping this could be brought forward during any committee of your pleasure so we could discuss it further and think about it.
So--
Or we could just call the vote, and if it doesn't work--
Do what we'd like to vote now, or we could vote on it this evening, if we want to, there's a few more items, and we do have an executive session. Are you ready to vote, or do you want to think about it some more?
I'm okay just voting. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and it's not going to hurt my feelings. It was just an idea, so I think we could.
I'm going to go ahead and call the vote, then?
Yeah.
All those in favor of forming a new justice committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
I think I heard two against, three against? Okay, it passes four to three. We'll bring that up again this evening. I had some things I wanted to bring up. One of them was that Vera Institute did indeed report today, but they're not coming to the city council, and they really could have, we didn't schedule it. I've talked with Councilmember Ken Mann about the next time Vera comes to town, that we should coordinate and schedule Vera to present to us. Also, if there is a justice committee, for example, that's where it would go. Is there any objection to having Vera come to present to the city council when the next time they come to town? Okay, I talked to Kelly about this, she's cool with it also. Dan?
That's fall, so that's fall of this year for their recommendations. Those were findings only today.
I'd also like to mention that the city council, as part of this year's effort on enhanced communication, we have done some updating to our webpages. I would ask the public to go to the city council webpage, and we now have a new section called Top Issues, which is where we're going to kind of rotate some of the bigger topical issues. For example, Councilmember Barker brought up housing. We realized we needed to pull together several items on focus on housing. The idea behind this is that it would not stay static, that when we in the council see a new and emerging issue, we can create a top issues section on this. This is part of our effort for the outreach that Councilmember Murphy was talking about, that we need to be a little bit more proactive. This is one proactive means. Also, please check out our Facebook page, which we use to link to documents that are on the webpage. And two of the council members have, two and a half council members have a blog. Dan and April have a blog, and I have an unpublished blog because I just don't have time to do anything with it. Finally, I'd like to mention that there was a homeless person summit held this Saturday at Maritime Heritage Park, not by the city, but I did attend it, and it was just basically an option or an opportunity by this one local nonprofit set up to listen to people who are experiencing homelessness. They were invited to the park, they were welcomed to the park, and I sat and I listened. And it was very important. It was very, you know, sometimes we talk about homeless people like they're different from you and I. Thankfully, I've never experienced homelessness. My brother briefly did, but, you know, I haven't been touched by it. It was very humanizing. It's one thing in your head to know that homeless people like you and me, it's another to meet homeless people, to know exactly that they're like you and I despite the difficulties they're experiencing. I just wanted to mention that, and I think that's all I have under Old and New. Anything else? We have an executive session, we have two items in executive session. Litigation, Swaddish versus the city of Bellingham, and potential litigation, a claim number 2017-22.